I now call the meeting door. The sole purpose of this call and work session as requested by Enbridge is to inform the commission and the community and address questions and concerns concerning the pipeline. So with that said, Art, if you'd introduce your folks or have them introduce everyone, then I'll turn it over to you.
You'd like a microphone?
You'd like a microphone? Got one right here.
All right, I'll start off. Art Haskins, I'm the manager of stakeholder engagement. I'm going to start our introductions with a little bit of statement. We usually do a safety moment or a news statement before we do any more meetings. And just really simple, our company values are safety, integrity, respect, and inclusion. And the reason why I mentioned those, and I think it's important, we'll talk more about our regulatory process, the work that we're doing and those types of things, but it really is what we do. So when we're talking about a project like this, you'll hear all kinds of things about safety. The more we move towards, whether it's our regular operations or the more we move towards our project, we'll talk a lot about our safety and our safety processes. And already, those that are working with us, I hope, are seeing all of the rest of those values and the actions in which we operate. So Art Haskins, I'm the manager of stakeholder engagement. That's the other part of it that I wanted to mention is that, you know, we call this, my position is called stakeholder engagement, not stakeholder outreach or public relations or anything like that. Engagement, because the process itself, our regular everyday process, as well as this process in relationship to our project, is all about engagement. It's critical that we do have information sessions like this, open houses, the FERC record and getting feedback from individuals or landowners. There are a lot of information gathering, things that we do, whether it's our surveys, but it really does matter to us. You know, we can look at our route and study it and send out surveyors, but it's very difficult to get the information that we would get unless we engage with that local landowner or that local community to find out what's really important to them, or things that don't show up on the map, or things that don't show up even in a survey process. So all of those things are part of this process, and clearly you should hear some of that as we talk tonight as well. Here's our contact information, and just pass this down and let everybody else introduce themselves.
Good evening. Thanks for being here with us tonight. Thanks for making time to discuss this project. Adam Parker with our government and Ferris team. And I think that's about it.
I'm Gus McLaughlin, I'm the environmental manager for the project.
Brian Cuda, I am the project manager for the Ridge Line project, the entirety of it, so development and execution.
Okay, we have a couple of our local contractors here. So we have Cameron and Matthew from Hall Strategies and Elizabeth James, she works with me out of the Nashville office. And you guys are operations?
We're just here to attend.
Okay. Grab a seat. Lots of seats available. All right, so a quick agenda, project and background for those that haven't attended or are not really aware of it. We will do a high-level overview of the project and the background of the project, a little bit more about the regulatory process, and then site selection process, and then we do have some drawings of what a compressor station and associated solar may look like, as well as time for questions and answers. So I think most people know at this point that this is, that we, Enbridge, own and operate the East Tennessee Natural Gas System, serve for customers in Tennessee for over 70 years. We're not new, been around for a long time. There's been a number of different owners of this pipeline system, but we're here in the area. In addition to, you can see the black line there being the northern half of our East Tennessee system, which continues all the way into Virginia and down into North Carolina. You can also see the green line on this map. The green line is our Texas Eastern system, and that runs north and south through the state, goes all the way, again, down through Texas all the way to the Maritimes. Big, long system of pipelines through the state here. It's actually three pipelines through this corridor, and East Tennessee is one. And you can see also on the proposed route, so the existing five compressor stations along here. In total, there are actually 38 compressor stations between our two systems and just the state of Tennessee. This would be, you can see by the orange triangle there, that would be a new compressor station, again, to manage this pipeline extension that would be needed, that we're proposing to build. So it would be built in service to one of the options for TBA. So TBA has announced in 2021 that they are replacing their Kingston Fossil Plant from coal to something. They had a number of options. One of their options is a combined cycle natural gas plant at that same location. If that's the option that's chosen by TBA in their process, then we would build this pipeline to support that building of their natural gas. So there's not enough natural gas in the current East Tennessee system to supply that, so we need to expand our system. So we've put another pipeline next to our existing pipeline, compressor station here, and then build, provide that gas down to Kingston. 114-mile pipeline along our existing, from Cowesdale to Round County, there's a lateral, and then a compressor station at this end with solar offsets. During the process, we did notify everybody within a half mile of the potential compressor station and 300 foot of the right-of-way. So some people notices that did not have a pipeline on their property currently, but they are within that survey corridor. We held landowner, public community meetings to engage and gather feedback. We're also still continuing our surveys, which Gus can talk about in just a little bit. Number of meetings and outreach that we take place in Trousseau, it's not inclusive. We've attended a number of other events here, part of the chamber, have attended a number of chamber meetings, and just continue to learn about the area and take part in things. We did highlight a presentation that we did in this exact room, actually, back in February of last year, with the current mayor, or the, excuse me, the previous mayor, chamber president or commission president at the time, and county road, and a few other people here locally, from which we just asked more about the community and tried to gather some information. I think, you know, all of us that were up here were at that same meeting. We talked a little bit, I've talked to the Rotary, we've talked about this before at other meetings, but there is obviously an economic impact to a community when you build a pipeline. So we have, and it's filed in our resource reports, but we contracted with the Baker Center from University of Tennessee, and they did our economic impact study. So there's direct and direct economic boost, obviously, if you bring in a number of workers for a pipeline process, there's going to be a spend there locally and in the surrounding communities, as well as post-construction, there will be a tax increase from what we currently pay in the state to what we pay with our new facilities. It's based on the value of our facilities and the current tax rates. So it is a guess, it's an estimate, it's based on current numbers as of a year ago, and it's the best guess we can have at the time. Don't hold us too accountable for every penny, that's why it's all rounded off, and it says estimate and approximately, but that's our best guess at this time. And it is an add-on or impact, so it decreases over the time of the pipeline, the value of it. If the pipeline system is worth less or more, that impacts the project, or the taxes as well.
Is that annually?
That would be annually, of course decreasing as it depreciates over time. And it also is connected to our existing facilities, which are, again, whatever their value is to at the time, so. All right, so our project itself, where we're at now is, I guess, kind of an update, is that since our last meeting in the community here, we did file our draft resource reports. I know that some people read those certainly and have some of that information on there. It was a lot of study by a group of us and our contractors that were led, and that information was submitted. As I said, there's still surveys that are ongoing, and updated information for those resource reports, as well as other information that's still changed. Our commuting landowner engagements are still ongoing. We're hoping to meet in with people, we'll be back out in the area on an ongoing basis and continue to engage with people, as well as our federal agency that's part of this process will be part of continuous review as well. We'll talk a little bit about the FERC process, but they're the federal agency because we're an interstate natural gas pipeline, and so ultimately they will submit our final permit, approval, but there are other federal and state inputs into that process. So I think before I go into more of the FERC process, which is here and really hard to read, it's an I chart process here, but let's go back a slide and maybe we'll get, I'll ask Gus to talk a little bit about some of our survey work and the information that we go through to try to define what it takes to find a compressor station location.
Sure. So this process is, it's a long process, and there's multiple agencies involved, federal, state. So by the way, to set it up is, right now, the FERC process, Federal Environmental Regulatory Commission, is our lead federal agency. They're the ones that actually develop an environmental impact statement. They do a draft first, and then they do a final. And after the final, the commission will make a decision whether to permit the project or not. But right now, we're in the pre-final process, which is probably 10, maybe 15 years old. And what they did is, rather than jumping right into a formal process, the application's in, it's formal, we're off to the races developing an EIS, they came up with an informal process before we actually submit our applications. And right now, this is in the informal process. We have meetings, we're reaching out, FERC has been out, they're also talking to the state and other federal agencies, anything to do with landowners, communities, things of that nature. So it's trying to, the ultimate goal of pre-final process is really to set up, you know, confirm our proposed route, if possible, work on things out with landowners, other agencies, if there are problems, to where when we submit our applications, it may not be 100%. And what I mean by that, there may be some still route issues, we're still talking about compressor station, things of that nature, where a lot of issues have been thrown on the table. And that's what they want to see, and that's what we're trying to do, is flush out all those issues so we can address them in our application. So the pre-final process has been going on for several months, and what we're looking at doing is, through the spring year, finish up the pre-final, and then sometime in the summer, we'll submit our actual FERC application. And what that is, is all these resource reports, I'll explain those in a minute, putting those together and submitting all the information on our route, and compressor station alternatives, meter stations, we have to submit alternatives also, and the routing. Sometimes the routing is pretty straightforward, and other times we may have two or three routes, and then in the same place, but along with our application, and I think one of the things, the point I wanted to make is, so FERC is our lead federal agency, but make no mistakes about it, we're under so much scrutiny for, one, we need Army Corps, a permit. We need Tennessee Department of Conservation, we need permits from them, and one of them is a rural one, which is federally delegated, and it's a very complicated permit, and it takes a long time to receive, as with the Corps. Fish and Wildlife, we need a section seven from them, and it's months and months of review. What I mean by that is, bat surveys, mussel surveys, all the things we have to look for out in the field. And then the state wildlife agencies, we've been working with them very closely also. Archaeological, well, historic, emery store, we have to do a tremendous amount of field work to, one, test to see along the route, I mean, some of the routes, like the battlefield and other areas we know are historic, international registered sites and others, we have to do the research in the field to make sure we're not impacting other areas. So right now, we're doing, we've already done weapons, water bodies, we've done a lot of aquatic surveys for mussels and other species, bat surveys. Right now, archaeology-wise, we're going through these two studies after the preliminary studies, so there's a lot of work going on in there. So wrapping it all up, in the summertime, between our FERC application, Corps, TDA, as we call them, and other folks call them, they're already involved in the project, but we will be submitting our applications. And what happens is, there are so many different factors that go along, that go along the selected compressor station site, the meter station site, and the route. On one note on the route, we're trying to parallel our existing line, as many of you know, and that is our goal, is to follow our existing line of way. It may not work in every incident because of development and other constraints, which back in the early 50s, a lot of times, they didn't worry about per se, but things are a lot different now with building pipelines, as you can imagine. But, you know, everything goes from where we're citing, compressor station. It has to do with the actual topography of the site, is there access to the site, is there, again, water resources, endangered species, is there, we've done investigations to make sure there's no contamination. Air factors, when we cite the compressor station, are there going to be air impacts to the community? I think the exit part of it is very important. Where is it in the community? How does it affect the community? All those types of things play a role in citing these compressor stations, not one thing. FERC is interested, being the overall agency, in all factors. The Army Corps is how we're going to cross, TDA quarter quad, how we're going to do the crossing, that's going to be quarter quad. FERC does from A to Z, and they will look at engineering, they will look at all these different factors, and they're looking for input from the community, they're looking for input from the landowners and other agencies. They do have calls and interact with the agencies, they want to know, but if the agencies have issues, and it's not just federal fish and wildlife, they're listening also to the state agencies. So I think there's a lot of work that goes into the site of the compressor station, which is definitely not a quick process for us, and that's why we're here tonight, educating, answering questions, those are the current, the current answers. So I think, Art, any other points?
I think the other part would be just to talk about the knowledge and experience of how, like, who reviews this, and how it's reviewed at that level, at all those levels. We submit the reports, all the research you've done, but they then develop that draft EIS and will get that at that level.
That's a good, it's a good point. So FERC, during this review, there's two things. One, FERC has experienced staff. They have geologists, they have air folks, they have water folks, they have, they're called bugs and bunnies folks, they have engineering folks, they look at great detail on what we're designing. Also, two, they hire, there's a third-party contract, it's Burns &amp; McDonald's, which are highly experienced engineers, environmental firm, doing the third-party work, writing up the EIS under FERC's supervision. So they have all of the resources to review this entire project, and it goes for compressor station, and also goes for the pipeline route and all the other facilities, gas facilities. So there's a tremendous amount of scrutiny of what we submit. We submit it, they verify everything, but they also do additional studies, they do whatever they need to do to create that environmental impact statement. And what that is, it reviews all the impacts, all ramifications, how we're going to mitigate those impacts, and then ultimately what happens is, is the FERC staff, who puts this together and makes their recommendation to the FERC commissioners on whether they think the project will lead to impacts that they don't recommend, or with our mitigation, they'll recommend to the actual commission that the project is okay and can be built according with conditions and mitigation they want, so. Proper word is given right now, if we can see where it's going. So anyway, there's a lot of scrutiny.
Just real quick, if you get any calls and you see some people along the right-of-way, you know, with hand shovels or maybe walking the right-of-way, they very well may be doing our whole full surveys. We also do have some integrity work, ongoing integrity work for our existing line, so they might, may go in and expose the pipe, take a closer look, and make sure that the pipeline integrity is there. So we do have activity in the field, but we are not constructing by any means, just want to make that clear. So if you get calls, you know, we're not in construction, we don't go to construction until FERC approves, or should FERC approve this project.
All right, just to continue there, so again, you can look this up on the FERC website, but what I wanted to point out was, the area is in light green there, so we're in the public input opportunities in the pre-file process right now, where, that's where we're here, you can see that arrow to that point. And then the block in between there is where we're going to file, and then it starts with the FERC developing their draft EIS, as Gus just explained, and then there's a public input opportunity at that point, again, where the draft EIS comes out, it's available for review and for public comment. So FERC will have a public comment period, and we believe, including meetings, where, again, you can have your opinion set on the record, as well as at the end, towards the end, when the final comes out, there's also another public comment period there before the final approval. So there are still a couple of public input opportunities in the process, and the record, especially once we're, you know, pre-file now, you can go on to the FERC, and, you know, there's opportunity for comment and input. Our timeline, and we list two timelines here, obviously you can see TBA's timeline, just because of the fact that this is a proposed pipeline project, until we have, until TBA finishes and has their record decision, we don't have a project. If TBA decides that they're going to go with an alternative and not with the combined cycle natural gas, then we won't build this pipeline. But due to the nature of their MECO process, their National Environmental Protection, and our process with FERC, we have to have a coexisting, overlapping type of process, basically why we will be in pre-file for 12 months instead of a shorter period of time, because of the overlap in this process. And the information that we're gathering, impact centers, and then the information that they're going to have, will have some impact into our EIS as well. So their draft environmental impact statement should be coming out around May, and then their final will be coming out around January of next year. And then Enbridge process, you can see where we're at there with the FERC scoping this fall. Sometime this summer, as Gus said, we'll file our application, and then approximately, our guess is about a year from now, we don't have a schedule, FERC controls that. And then, again, best estimates, we're looking at the fall of 2025 to begin construction, and take about a year to finish that construction.
Schedule-wise, that's our thoughts on the schedule. Once we submit our application, FERC will publish a notice of application and a notice of schedule. Well, they will be the schedule. So they don't have to meet their own schedule, but at least there'll be something published that people can look at.
All right, before we go into this, I'll just turn it over to Brian, he could talk a little bit about our site selection process, in addition to the environmental stuff, but from an operations and project development standpoint, and kind of where we're at to date, as well as anything else that he wants to add, since he is the project manager.
Can everybody hear me without mic? Okay, all right.
I'll use, I will use the mic. So, yeah, as Art said, so Brian Cuda, I'm the project manager, so again, in addition to what Gus has laid out from environmental impacts for where we cite our pipeline, our compressor stations, our meter stations, all of our new facilities, we also have to take a look at the hydraulics of the project. So how much gas are we delivering to TBA? That determines what size pipeline we need, what our operating pressure is, that determines how much horsepower we need at our compressor station, that will determine where our meter stations go, how much we're, so in this project, for example, at the beginning, in Trousedale County, next to the existing Columbia Gulf meter station, we will have a meter station there, we have an option on that property right now, we've looked at a number of properties around there, we have an option on that because we do need to draw gas from Columbia Gulf, and then we will have modifications to our meter stations at Texas Eastern, which are shown on the map, which is on the property currently that we have an option on. There's also a investment gas meter station there, so we'll be drawing gas from both of those meter stations in addition to building a new one for Columbia Gulf to draw gas. So ideally, when we look at the hydraulics, we'd like to have within a certain mile, in our draft resource report, we have 11 miles. So again, as Art mentioned, when our drafts were filed, we're in preliminary design, so we're in about 30% design, to give you an idea, folks that work in construction or no construction, a lot of design packages go 30%, 60%, 90%, and then you issue a bid package and you go to construction. So we're in the 30% going to 60% design right now. When the resource reports were filed, the drafts, we had been speaking with one compressor manufacturer. We since went out to bid to two different compressor manufacturers. When we got the bids back in, the horsepower... When we got the bids back in, the horsepower and, not to get extremely technical, but the compressor curves, which dictate how the compressor units will operate, have allowed us to now extend out to about mile post 15. So our search can now extend a little bit further from a compressor station and solar array site. So I just wanted to state that for now, because I know there's been a little bit of confusion from the resource reports to what we've talked about now. So originally, our cutoff was right around the Trousdale Smith County line. Now we can go approximately four miles or so into Smith County, should we need to look for a compressor station in solar array sites, so we could look for property there now. Right now, as Gus mentioned, we've looked at a number of sites for environmental features, for topography, for tree clearing, obviously, solar arrays don't do very well in the shade. So having areas with a lot of trees, as Gus mentioned, we do have bad habitat in the area, so tree clearing is something that we look to minimize. And when we've looked at the Bratton Land Trust property, we have the Texas Eastern pipelines going through there right now, we need gas from that system. Midwestern gas is on that property right now, we need gas from that system. That was one of the key drivers, not the only key driver. And looking at that site from a hydraulic standpoint, it allows us to tie into those meter stations at that property. And we don't have to build additional infrastructure, should we go further downstream on the pipeline. Say we went mile post 14, we'd be building additional infrastructure. So that's one of the reasons that we selected that. We did look at a number of properties within Trousdale County. Looked at a property just north of the Battlefield Trail. That was the hollow property at the time, that is since sold. We were denied sale at that property. We have spoken with some individuals at the start of our pipeline, and those individuals did not want to sell. We spoke with some individuals a little bit past, closer to our Dixon Springs compressor station, that were also not willing to sell. We took a look at a couple parcels just across and north of Dixon Springs off 25. As Gus mentioned earlier, this project was built, the original project was put in in the 50s, pre-Mountain Historic Preservation Act. As Gus mentioned, we're all doing cultural digs right now. Those properties have cultural artifacts and the potential to be registered on historic places. So those sites were also not selected. There is one site that is for sale. However, when we look at it from a topography and a tree clearance standpoint, we cannot, it doesn't meet our demands, it was one of our alternatives that we looked at. And we ruled that out because we basically have an area clear, basically in a hole, and then we have close to 20 to 25% slopes going up in all directions. So one of the things that's very important for the solar array and solar panels is set south and west facing at the solar radius and locations, so we can have the proper sunlight during the day going across the solar array. So we have looked at a number of sites before we put the option on the site that we're currently at. And that's, you know, so that's the selection process we've gone through. The reason for the solar array with the compressor station is not just FERC, but as Gus mentioned, many other agencies, the EPA, the Corps of Engineers, TDEC, all the applications that we submit, and all the agencies that we work with. And I'm sure you've heard it in the news, but air quality has become something that is very, you know, it's looked upon very closely in all of these applications, it's looked upon every project that gets put in. So one of the things that we proposed is Enbridge and even with TBA, is we are not putting in gas turbines which are at our current compressor stations. So we're putting in what are called EMDs, electric motor drives. So they are electric driven compressor units. So in order for us to be as, not just a good steward to the environment, but also to the overall grid in, the overall grid in the area, the solar array is proposed to be about eight megawatts. That eight megawatts will offset some of the usage and power our EMDs, our electric motor drives. So we don't have to pull all of that from the grid. The way we have it set up right now, TBA is going to be doing work on the transmission lines through the property. They will give TriCombi Electric a drop down structure, and then we will have a three way construction agreement to build a substation there. And then our solar array would feed the compressor station, and then any additional energy we need, we would pull from TriCombi Electric. So TriCombi Electric gets new customers part of this, as well as back to the tax revenue that the company gets as well. Questions?
Do you want to talk about the TBA side?
So, yeah, so I mean, that's, yeah, sure, I didn't, the elephant in the room. So we all know that Tennessee Valley Authority has a parcel that's abandoned for years now. Tennessee Valley Authority is who we ultimately would be building this project for. Again, should they retire the Kingston Coal Plan, go with the combined cycle natural gas plan. TBA has told us that the property is not available. They have future plans, what those are, we don't know. However, the fact that, what's interesting is the fact that the transmission lines are being upgraded through the property that we now have an option on. They have stated that those upgrades will be coming from the east and heading towards the west. That's all the information we have, you know, from the TBA engineers. So nothing other than that that we have.
Question, there's a question right there.
Yes.
What, you sound like you already know where the compressor station is going, and it's not existing. Where is it going, is it, is that it right there? On top of that hill?
It's on Moquee Road or Moquee, where it's going to be.
Where's the compressor station?
Yes, so the way that
Nobody's told us, does that last map you sent out to us, was it was going to be in Dixon Springs? You're working now, right there, at this moment. Dig, I don't know why you're digging, but you're digging over there.
Yeah, so, right, so as Gus said, and our draft resource reports state, and what I was just going through is when we went through our site selection for compressor stations, that parcel is our preferred alternative.
Okay, well, that'd be good to know, since I live right across the street from you. And nobody told us.
So landowner notifications went out multiple times.
Yeah, but you showed a map that said that the pumping station was going to be towards Dixon Springs, so I didn't care. Now you're saying it's going to be across the street from me.
So actually, our landowner information meetings that we had in November of 2021 that we had in this room.
That's all it shows, but that doesn't help me none.
No, it showed that location as our preferred location.
It doesn't still help me none. The land values going where we live are going to go down. And two, there was no mention about a solar array. And you're probably, I know where you're talking about putting all this. That's all good and that. Okay, eight megawatts, I'm an electrician, so eight megawatts power means something to me. You can't get that from solar arrays. Sorry, you can't.
Okay, so, I mean, we do have
And you can get pumps.
We do have
Your pumps are going to run off of 240 or 480. So you're going to need a lot of power to pump it. I know what those sound like, I wired chiller units that pump, just a quarter of that.
So we, yes, so we do noise studies, and again, electric motor drives and streaming.
You can't answer my questions, you want to go back into this government stuff. We don't care about that.
I'm not sure what the question was.
All we care about is how that's going to affect us.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to address, was the, was the air quality, and I think I addressed with the electric motor drives. So that's the, that's the air quality.
And that's fine, we don't, we don't, air quality, stand.
Yes, so
We hear, we hear, like, about three, four years ago, when y'all were, Columbia was starting to use this gas line, this thing whistled, and you could hear it in the night through our windows. Okay, so, and that's from the pressure release, I'm assuming from the air pressures coming out of the pipe, because y'all were feeling it. That's fine, we're okay with it, we lived through it. But if you're seeing something that's going to end up being like this all the time, we got no interest in that.
So that's not the case, so we do do controlled releases at valve sites?
Yeah, we hear.
And that would have been what that is, that's not Columbia, so that would have been
But this lasted for months. It did, the company told y'all.
No, that's not a release from Texas Eastern Midwest.
And then what about the blow up you had down the road just last year, where it burst through the ground and we everybody in the area for
And the police had to come out there.
Ten hours before somebody could get it.
So I'd like, I mean, I'd like to talk about the compressor station and the solar array, and not I thought that's what we were talking about.
Talk to me about that, because I'd love to hear it, because nobody's told us.
So, so as Art mentioned, we've had numerous meetings here. And everybody, everybody along Boadock Road was invited to the meetings
My duty, may I ask my duty?
From Enbridge and from the FERC.
No, I live on Moquee Road, I was not invited. I get a little magnet that goes on my fridgeboard telling me what to do in case of an emergency. The only way I knew about this meeting, I read it in the newspaper. And one of the employees was parked in my driveway taking pictures, and I wanted to know why. And he told me because of the stuff going on up there, so I'm like, I don't know nothing about what's going on across the road. I mean, my house is downhill. So I'm very concerned about solar arrays, because I do have a big consulting coming through. And the health risk, if it overheats. Then what's that going to mean, rain downhill from this stuff? I mean, it's a lot of things FERC can't answer right now. But I want to know, in the past, when y'all with this stuff, what the people that live there have to say about it.
So, again, we will look into our why, we would need your name and address.
Yeah, the mayor's been over my house, he knows, if I knew this, I would have been here to every meeting.
Okay, and again, we've had meetings going back to November of 2021, with all residents within, as was stated earlier, half a mile radius of this site, so
Yeah, I'm right across.
If you're within a half mile, then a letter was sent to that alien address.
It might have been sent, but I never got it. And that would be the first time they'd give me those on the street.
So we can look into that. But back to, back to the noise, so we do noise studies for all of our compressor stations, all of our meter stations, and we are required by all of the agencies to meet decibel levels. And we're required by FERC to mitigate those decibel levels, the nearest receptor, so that would be the nearest home. So we are required to do that. So the electric motor drives accomplish not only air, but accomplish noise as well. And that is what we've already studied out there. So we have taken a look at that, and if we need to do anything else from a, from a noise mitigation standpoint, we can do tree screening, there's a number of things we can do. We do pipe dampering, there's a lot of different things we can do. That is correct, yeah.
Will that, our review be made public?
Yes.
Okay, so what are y'all doing today? What is, what is actually being done right there on Boadock?
So we have an option on that property, so in order, we have an option on that property, we have a two year option on it. So right now, we've already exercised our, we're going to be exercising our one year option.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so if you buy, so when you buy, when you buy a piece of property, you have to do your due diligence. So in order for us to do our due diligence, we went out there, as Gus mentioned before, we did environmental studies, we looked out there to see
They know, surveyors, we've seen all of them. I'm asking, are you building a road down to the bottom of the dully there?
No, we're not building a road out there.
Why do you got a track over there?
It says access road.
And it does say access road over, over states.
So if our operations folks are working out there, that's not us.
Well, then, I'd just, I'd like to know what you're doing, because I mean, nobody tells us.
So we're not, we are not East Tennessee Natural Gas Operations, but if Operations is out there?
That's what I, that's what I mentioned earlier, because we, on our way in, we saw just out the road, just the Dixon Springs, they're also doing some inspection work out there as well. So we run our pigs regularly, and sometimes we go in and uncover the pipe, inspect it, make sure everything's
That's what you're going to be doing next. So those, those pipes you're inspecting are probably 100 feet from our house.
Understood, yes sir.
And it would be nice to know if you're going to uncover them, or if you're going to dig near them. I would like the notification to my family, so we can stay safe, just in case you blow a cap on one of them.
100% appreciate that, and I will too. I will, I will get your information, and we will follow up with you, and we'll make sure you
Appreciate that, that's what I'd love to hear.
I will, and I do apologize about that. Unfortunately, we have integrity work across our system, even we are not all as identified.
I'd like to be a good maker. Love it, have it, come stay.
Yes sir.
Don't stay long.
We promise to get out of here as soon as possible, but we want to make sure our pipes are safe, and you are as well.
I got a question for you. So, no matter, you were talking about your compressor station, you're going to have to draw gas from Columbia Gold?
Yes.
And you're going to have to tap the Bratton property, which is Midwest gas, is that what you said?
Midwestern gas transmission.
Okay, so either one, you're going to have to tap both of them?
That's correct.
And put a regular, a metering station to get to wherever you put the compressor station, is that correct?
Yes, so there's, there's existing meter stations right there on the hill. If you go around Boadock Road, you can see the drive up, and you see the fences up there. So that's where Midwestern gas is, and that's where Texas Eastern gas is, which is an Enbridge asset as well. So that's where those three pipelines run across that property.
So no matter what, that's what I'm asking, no matter what, you're going to have to tap them to get to wherever
That is correct, yes, so wherever we go, that is correct, we need to tap those to
If it's in Marthville or Smith County, or wherever you go.
Yeah, that is
You've still got to tap them and build metering stations.
Yes sir, that is correct, yes, yeah. So where, yeah, wherever we do go, we do need to modify those, because right now, our existing East Tennessee natural gas system takes gas from Columbia, from Texas Eastern, from Midwestern. But again, those volumes are all taken right now, all across the line by local distribution companies all throughout the area. So we do not have additional gas on that.
So what we're looking at is, no matter where the compression station goes, the meter station that is there now, you can pretty much just say, there's going to be three of those. So you're going to triple what that looks like.
No, we're going to, we're going to modify the footprint of those two. The footprint's not going to expand very much for Texas Eastern and Midwestern gas for those two existing meter stations. They're modifications, so they're not new ones. So we'll be doing modifications, but we will, wherever we go, we do need piping from those two meter stations to get to the compressor station. Because ultimately, the compressor station will compress the gas from Columbia, Texas Eastern, and Midwestern gas, all the way down to the end of the line.
My other question is, it keeps being thrown up of the revenue coming back to Trousdale County because of this project. And, you know, it was mentioned at the first that, okay, so that would be, you know, sales tax because of the construction workers buying goods here in Trousdale. Okay, well, when that, when it's constructed, that goes away. Then you were talking about the value of the place, I'm guessing you're talking about property taxes there.
At the lower.
It's, it's, yeah, it's at the lower tax, it's not, it's not a, it's not a property tax per se, because it, but it's, because we have it under our, it's the value of the asset that's put into the grant, right? So it's done, it looks, it's looked at different than the amount of footage we have, because our pipe is in easement. But so if, if the pipe was bigger, and, or more, or we had more compressor stations, that would, each, each value of the pipe, that asset would increase the tax. But so if if the pipe was bigger and or more, or we had more compressor stations, that would, each each value of the pipe, uh, that asset would increase the tax.
So Trousedale County gets revenue from sales tax and property tax. And what you're describing is neither of those, so how is Trousedale County going to get revenue from this project?
It's the it's the tax that we pay currently on our system, uh, and we would in increase the value of our system, so we'd be paying tax on the system.
Who do you pay that to?
I I don't know.
I know, we're talking about tax dollars coming to us.
Not the state of Tennessee, not revenue that's generated in Trousedale and paid to someone else. What's going to come to the county government, which we get our revenue from sales tax and property tax? So I'm just, I'm, I keep being told it's going to be a benefit to the county, I just want to hear how that's going to work.
I I don't know how that works exactly in the state of Tennessee.
I can, I can tell you in most of this, most of, most states, ad valorem tax does roll down to the county, which goes down to school districts and the local, the local taxing bodies, whether it's your fire departments and whatnot. Typically, that's how it works, that's a good question, I will follow up with you to confirm that. But it's basically an ad valorem tax, it's like a property tax, it's it's based on the value of the pipeline.
So you've been out here at TBA for all these years, can you tell us exactly how many taxes you paid to us in this district?
I I don't know that number.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That's correct.
Now you're turning it into two point five million by building this, it don't make sense.
So over time, like you said, over time, the value, over time, the value of that of that payment will go down over time. So like you said, this this pipe was originally put into place nineteen forty-nine, so over time, it has gone down.
I know it's going to go down, but just like this, if you build this pipeline and he said it want to go. If you build it and TBA don't take the gas, it decreases drastically.
We will, we will not move forward unless TBA decides to take gas.
But everybody knows how the government is, we have a new first side that was built, that was never finished, okay? So TBA can say, hey, we're going to do this, the next president can come in and change everything, y'all ain't supplying it no more. And boom, there it is, and 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 I'm not, I'm not beating y'all there, I'm not, I'm really not, I'm not. But we're just trying to get answers to the truth, y'all are throwing big, big money figures and you're saying this and that. We've got to live through one, we still got it, y'all are welcome to use it, they will let you use it, even though you're doing it for them, so we're just trying to figure out the truth.
Yeah, so what what I said was that we won't build our pipeline unless TBA builds a a gas.
Correct, you did say that, but if they start it up, okay, and shut it down in a year, you said it's going to depreciate. How much gas is going through it?
No, it's not based on the gas, it's not based on the flow of gas, it's based on the value of the asset that we put into the ground and how we build it.
And 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 also, when we sign a contract with TBA, it's a long-term contract, it's not for a year or two.
But that's a long-term contract with you, how does money translate to us?
It's the value of the property and we pay that whether.
But you're paying a hundred and twenty-five thousand on what you got, so that's not a big.
Seventy-some years old, right? When it was put in, it was worth a lot more and we paid a higher rate. So we we, this is our estimate on current rates and our value of what we anticipate the cost to build this infrastructure. And we'll get taxed on that, and the depreciation rate, I don't know that what that rate is, but it will decrease over a number of years. Whether it's in service or not, that doesn't matter as far as our tax value does. And if it, gas isn't used there, we still connect it at different spots or existing pipeline, we will use this infrastructure still.
I'm sorry, we have three different questions, I'm going to take them in order, I apologize, I'll put one, two and three.
Because if you'd like to. I was going to ask, what is your depreciation?
I don't know that, we can look that up, but that would be a in some sort of state table or something, so.
Yeah, I I'm sorry.
Well, is it like, are we talking this kind of money for three years or for fifteen years or for ten years?
We're still paying tax on the on the pipe we put in place in nineteen fifty.
A low amount.
So it it depreciates over time, I don't know the rate of depreciation. And and again, this project is still in early phases, so we 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 took numbers based on what we know today. Picked them over to our our third party and they ran, they ran these numbers. So these numbers are not perfect, they will change, if should the scope of the project changes, should facilities move, there's something to change, and it's still early on. But we get the question, what does this mean for the county? And we're trying to provide an idea as of based on what we know right now.
We just wondered for how many years.
Understood.
That's what's important.
I will get back to you, um, as soon as I, as soon as I can, I'll add.
And so to kind of follow up on what's being asked, the other question is, who determines the value of your asset? Is that our county assessor, is that the federal government, is that a state entity?
Typically, it's a state, state assessment.
Yes, sir. Um, will there be like Mercaptan injections going on at this site?
So, that's a great question, so our.
No, we don't know.
Transition line.
We do not authorize it like that.
Our transition line is not authorized, it's simply done at the city gate where we deliver gas to our customer. Yes, sir.
Uh, the solar arrays will just.
That's a good question, so let's talk about, let's talk about that, we have some rendering with some viewpoints, you live across the street.
Understood.
We, uh, you might notice that we took took care to make sure you guys had an idea of what you might be looking at across the streets, so.
All right, so there's viewpoint one oh one, viewpoint one oh two, those would be off the compressor station off of Boat Dock Road. And then viewpoint, um, oh two one would be off of Poyer's Bend Road, looking up the hill towards where the the solar would be. So this side over here is is these lines, that would be solar. And this would be the, this is the existing here, and this is the new compressor station location.
Wow, right in front of my house. Okay.
All right, so this would be off of viewpoint zero one, um, so looking off of Boat Dock Road towards the, you can see this would be a hill there.
I just love looking at that view coming in on Sunset.
This is one version in the red, um, white with some additional, uh, tree planting and then after the trees grow. Uh, viewpoint number two, so this is looking off of Boat Dock Road, um, up at the compressor station. So this is the compressor itself, uh, operations building and a storage building. Uh, and then white, some trees, uh, viewpoint zero two, looking up currently off of Poyer's Bend Road up towards the hillside. You can see the top of the compressors, of the solar, and then you can put some trees there.
Who designed those, is that something fairly close to what it's actually going to look like?
It is the the roughest thirty percent rough graph based on our 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 initial thirty percent.
We talked about the rendering.
All the renderings.
Like, they look like farm, they look like barns and, you know, very, very, very commensurate with everything that's around us. But is it going to turn into a giant brick building?
No, that was, that was something we focused on.
In November, in Nov, uh, sorry, in November, we met with a number of folks over at the bank. One of the main concerns is that this should not be in keeping with the agricultural heritage of the neighborhood. We took our typical design and worked to incorporate a barn design based on what other barns look like in the area. Typically, their white barn with a nice hip roof, we we are still in this design phase, we're seeking feedback. If this is not appropriate or not right, there are things we can do to modify that. Um, at the end of the day, we do have to pump gas, we will need a building of some sorts somewhere.
Just want an ice.
The 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 renderings are are done by professionals, they actually go out, they take pictures, different views, they take the topography, they take all of that into account. And then they serve what we think it may look like.
Yeah, but that's what I'm asking, is is the style of your building, it's going to be commensurate with the area and it's not just going to be some big brick square.
And and that's one of the things we're here for, that, I mean, we want to solicit feedback on that, but what, we don't want, we know people don't want bricks, so again, we can propose, you know, the hip. They went away hard, but we proposed the hip roof, we showed some red, we showed some white, um, again, feedback on on trees, on buffers like that. So those are all the things we're looking at, um, the one question you did ask, for scale-wise, yes, the buildings, this is our standard building design right now. Um, so that is not just created by an artist or anything, that is, these are renderings from the standpoint of it's a rendered building, but from scale and person size, that is correct, that is what the size.
Blended.
The idea, usually the idea, the idea would be in keeping with not putting up of, yeah, a metal, so Dixon Springs, for example, is a, is metal. So, you know, metal and brick.
And that's not terrible, but they, we're not going to end up with like the nuclear cooling tower in my backyard.
No, that's the whole point, yes, right, that's the whole point, and that's the whole point of putting up, you know, the red and white to show the different things we can do, get some style for roofs that we can do, different pitches and things like that, and and again, it's, this is, you know, we're looking for input on that, so we can do the best we can do to make it look and feel more like a community and what we can do, again, you know, we show the trees in a very immature state, then we show the cheap, trees in a mature state as they grow, uh, we've done that, you know, throughout our entire system, uh, throughout the country. We put in trees that after a number of years, they grow, they fill in, uh, we try to use trees that, you know, don't lose the leaves, so obviously, so fall and winter, you have, you're looking at it all the time, so. Uh, is it going to be manned?
Uh, yes, so we would, so right now, the plan would be to have, uh, most likely, um, so we we do have individuals that live in the area, we do have folks at Dixon Springs. Um, so it will be a combination of manned and then remote operated, uh, but that hasn't been completely decided yet. Um, obviously, from a maintenance standpoint, we will have our maintenance crews out there and have to mow all the property and keep up with that.
How many people were you looking at, because he said earlier, okay, he said that that two point five was part of what? Building it, the people coming in, the money they're going to spend in the county, you know, and then we're going to have people running it, so what's kind of the number to make that two point five?
Yes, so so actually, the, so our East Tennessee Natural Gas Operations Group right now, because the pipeline is parallel on the existing pipeline, uh, they feel that they can handle the pipeline with their current staff, adding a new compressor station, it is between two of our area managers. Uh, they have discussed potentially bringing on an additional individual, that has not been determined yet, but that is not, so that is not factored into the ad valorem taxes that we saw earlier on.
You don't know who that you're paying that to, whether it's the state, how much that tricked us down to us?
So as as Adam stated, state by state, county by county, there are, there are different ways that it comes back to the county. And again, so we do need to talk with our insurance folks and our tax folks and get back to you on how Tennessee works, how it comes to the county, and and again, what that depreciation rate is.
I'm fairly certain that it is, it does roll down to tax, it's not uncommon that this amount would roll down to the county. Well, no, I just want to be a hundred percent sure before I provide that information, since you guys seem to think that it might, we, they, that you guys aren't familiar with ad valorem taxes. I just want to make sure that they do in fact roll down the county, take good information to.
I'm I'm sure they do roll down at some point, but is it, is it five percent, is it ten, is it twenty?
Yeah.
It does the governor decide what counties and how much.
It's usually the.
The trick of damage.
It's based on what that, it's based on what's in your county, the value of the pipe in your county.
Right, and and today.
Two point five million.
No, the project is eleven million, taxes extra in the state.
The compressor station.
Depending on the the size of the, the miles of pipe in each county, whether it's a compressor station in the county or not. So two point five is not the highest, Morgan County actually gets the most because it has way more pipe than the rest of this, additional compressor station. Um, I forget which county, but one of the counties gets around eight hundred thousand, they just have like thirty miles or something like that.
Yes, and we do have the.
And it's based off of what we currently pay by county, so there's got to be a way that this rules to the law.
Yes, sir, we got two questions, Steve.
I just, I just say another good point, I live at the bottom of this hill, I understand, I have, I've talked with the mayor on this, he's familiar with it. Abby, there's something that's cold in the road that's pointing towards my house. There's a lot of water that comes out of that hill, what you're showing up there, being more concrete, the water runoff. I I guess technically you can't say that because it's basically, I don't know, but I'm getting a lot of water in my front. Enough to where it's flooded in my house, it's come out, it's pulled up the pipe in my front yard and that was from a time where we had three inches of rain in a few hours. What you're putting up there now is going to, I'm, it's already missing.
This is part of our water quality application.
Okay, can you divert the water runoff somewhere else besides my front door?
As as with any facility design, we're going to have to account for some on the site and what it goes off to.
Can we, is there somebody that can discuss with us or come and see what happens when a bad rain comes?
So unfortunately, we don't own the property, we have an option.
Well, I mean, it's your, your station is up on the hill that you're going to be building there.
Right.
That water is currently causing problems now, when you build this, it's going to make it worse.
I'll understand, try to understand your concern, we're going to have to account for that, when we get a design put together, we can certainly chat with you. I'll be glad. We have to account for some of both of the compressor station and the solar.
I have video I can share with you. Understood, understood. I'd also say that just just that very, other than the buildings, there will be a small parking pad for the employees who work there. Now, the rest of it is typically a gravel track.
Yeah, and that's, that speeds up the drain, the drainage of the hills, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't come down slowly, because you're, if you were up, if there was a natural picture, the water would come down naturally and slowly.
Understood.
But because there's a lot of gravel up there, it drains very quickly, so I get it all at once. And that's what I'm trying to say is I, I'd like for you to look into it, I'd like to hear more about it, because it has flooded my house.
Understood.
And I would love some kind of, I've tried to work with mayor, this mayor, I've tried to work with Chamberlain, I've I've told everybody to tell, but nobody helped.
That's the feedback we're looking for, and I appreciate that, and thank you, I promise you, you will take that into consideration, we will, take a note on your render while it's be followed up on.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
In regard to the revenue estimates for the county, Art, I believe you referenced the Baker Institute, UT calculated the numbers. Can that report be shared to the county mayor? So that more in the county can study the revenue estimates that the Baker Institute put together for.
Yeah, that report's been filed on on the record already in the docket, it's public publicly available, um, we'll share it, I actually have a copy if somebody wants a copy. Um, and and just to clarify a concern that was brought up earlier, the two point five is the estimates for discounting. Like I said, it's eleven something for the entirety of the project, broken down by county, and that is not related to the direct and indirect of the construction. Those are totally different set of numbers, again, in in, you know, that are part of the economic impact study based on the Baker study. And that's the construction, so the the tax dollars that we're talking about that would start after this project gets finished are not the same as the total direct and indirect costs that are part of the construction, so that's a whole nother set of dollars that is part of that Baker study.
We can get you a copy.
Yes.
Following up on that, and I just want to make sure that all the county commissioners are hearing this, that this is not revenue that can be depended on for thirty years. That this will go down, and how much it goes down, we have yet.
We're going to find out for you, I don't know what the state depreciation rate is for that, but yes, it it certainly will go down based on the fact that we don't pay.
I I will say that we are still paying taxes on the assets we put in the ground in nineteen forty-nine, nineteen fifty.
But you're not paying the same as you did.
It will not be, it will not be, no.
My my point is, there have been some commissioners who have made the, you know, the statements that will, you know, we have projects that are needing to be paid for, and this money would be great for that project. This will not be constant reoccurring, uh, income to the county based on everything y'all have told us. And I'm not with.
I think constant reoccurring, correct? But the level will obviously decrease, right? We will still pay, 50 years from now, we'll still be paying taxes in the state here in the county.
But if we take out loans for a project, right?
So I would just make it clear, don't cop your chickens before it happens.
100%.
So we've, we've.
Don't budget.
This is, we've, we've built a lot, we've built a lot by my weight. And I just want to be very clear so I don't have to be up here again five years from now explaining what we said today. Please do not include this in your current budget forecast until the project is in service and you issue your first tax bill. And then, once you receive the check, you may start including it in your forecast. I say that with a smirk, but I really mean that. And I want to be very clear about that. If you're happy to pay our taxes, or you just don't want anyone building 15 schools on expectations and taking out loans, we don't want anyone being in any trouble here.
Yes, sir. You've had your hand up for a long time.
Chairman Yom, and I may have missed explanation, but you were talking about the decimal level. Is there a median decimal level that your compressor stations of this size run at? And if so, what is that decimal? And do you guarantee a max decimal level that this stack will run? Those are your questions. And yes, all of our compressor stations, when we build them, we have to meet a 55, what they call LDN. Factors in night and day. And it equates to, I believe, 53 DVA.
A weighted, should they? A weighted A, DVA?
DVA.
Okay.
But, but the factor they use is LDN and factors in certain period at night. So we have to meet that, you know, nearest noise receptor. So we're going out, we're doing N O E studies, professional outfit that goes up, and they do that. And what they do is take one, the ambient readings, what's out there before we build it, at night and during the day, at all times. Use that. We have a lot of experience with compressor stations. Then they factor and they do estimates. And that will be in our resource reports coming up this summer of what those noise readings are. And then, based on that, how we design the compressor station, the type of building, the type of insulation, the type of vents, as Brian indicated, wrapping around the pipe, things of that nature. And the electric motors are different than a gas turbine. As folks know, and with the gas turbines we use these days, unless you're standing there and you see the exhaust coming out of the stack, you don't know how to run it because of the type of building you build. And that's what we're investigating here. But we have to do the studies. And then, after we build it, we have to go back and do noise studies when it's running in full mode, different scenarios. And we have to report that to FERC. We don't leave that criteria, we have to go back and fix it. And, and, and most of the time, the projects I've done 30 years, we've come, pretty much, we've met what we figure we would need to do for the design. It's been a couple times we've had to go back and tweak it, but we're, we're, you know, required to do that. So, but that'll give you a sense of the noise reasons.
I'd also add, just real quick, because it's responsive to a meeting that we had in November. One of the concerns raised was, I want the area, we want to be keeping, sorry, we want us to be in keeping with the spirit of our neighborhood. Understand that we're trying to work on the farm design, open more comments and thoughts there. The noise is another thing we heard that's really mitigated by the electric driven compressor station. The other thing we heard about was lighting at night. Dark sky compliant was the question and the request. We went back to our security team and raised that concern with them. There is a solution we can bring on board, and it's a dark, dark sky compliant lighting solution. Nowward facing lighting, we're still working on the details, some more to come on that. And I just wanted to give you guys an update that we are still working on that, and that is being taken into consideration. We drive in the roads at night, we know it's pitch black. And I like it that way. I think that's pretty, I wish my neighborhood was the same way, but unfortunately, it's not. But anyways, I know there's some other questions. I just wanted to address that before you forgot. Yes, sir.
This is more of a statement than a question. Just so that people know, that the conversation, conversation D V level of a restaurant is typically 86 to 89 D V. So if they're saying it's not going to get past 53 or 55, that's not at the nearest location. That's not very loud. I mean, that's a lot lower than what it would be if you were setting it early.
We've been having a round, we've spent a lot of time on it.
Absolutely. I mean, that's, that's respectable.
I have people come by.
Are you too?
Lot louder than that.
That's what we find, highway traffic is often much louder than our station.
Especially with more of a force, it comes through right there.
Yes, sir. I have discovered questions, yes, sir.
Just propose compressor stack, that's called the only, I want a stack up here where the bigger station is there.
Right.
Pull your picture back up and let us show us exactly where it's at.
The compressor station is to the north of the view.
Where's the compressor station? I mean, they have.
So, so, so right now, so right now, you get, so Botox Road comes around. So right now, this is where you go uphill. This is Texas Eastern, this is Midwestern gas. You can maybe see a little bit of scar going all the way up through, but there's a darker green area. That's where the three Texas Eastern lines go through. This area right up here would be the compressor station. All these trees would stay. We did that purposely to keep this, to keep the trees there and not take them down. And then the solar array would be on that side.
The solar array would be up there where the solar base field is now, probably?
Yes. Yes. Right here is the solar. Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can you not get us a depreciation rate?
I can. Our tax department's open in the morning and I'll.
Yep. How much land is this in all? How much land do you got buying right now?
Right now, we have an option on right around 210 acres or so.
There's 210 acres of prime development land that some of the commissions would call, they would want to see houses on a post of that. So basically, what you're going to have is, this is what's going to be at your front door, or it's going to be subdivided into a whole lot of rooftops. This particular project would keep this farm intact with enough.
The land would stay together.
Well, wouldn't it be commercial? And commercial is more taxes than.
Solar farm.
Not commercial.
We haven't. Sorry, I'm going on. Sorry.
My understanding is this is part of the line you've already got there.
It is.
It is, correct.
That's why, that's why we'd like to be there.
Yeah, you can.
So there's multiple lines, yeah.
Yeah, you can see right here, as, as he said, this is the Texas Eastern line.
And you're putting up.
Is that the East Tennessee line?
Right, the East Tennessee line, right now, comes from, so we would have our meter station back here off Bass Road to the, to the west. And the existing line comes through here right now, follows all the way along there. We have our Texas Eastern lines that shoot up through there. So right now, there's currently five lines on this property. So five pipelines on the property and two meter stations on the property. So, so again, when looking at site selection from existing infrastructure that's already in place in order to model hydraulics and run it properly, you know, this again, comes out, stands out from all those as, as an ideal location for it. Again, we had a, we had a landowner that, you know, we spoke with, and we have an option on the property. They, they were willing to sell the property, which was very hurt.
Yes, sir. In the back.
Columbia Gulf you're talking about, where is that line coming? Can it come in up?
It says where.
Can it come in up east of this?
Yeah, Columbia, so Columbia. Yeah, Columbia, Columbia Gulf, so Bass Road, so just to the, to the west. So about four, about. Actually, it's exactly four miles along our pipeline to back to Bass Road. Columbia Gulf, which is part of TransCanada now, they have a meter station on, on the road right there. And we would be building a new meter station adjacent to that. So right now, our line runs through there. It's, it's called our exist, our East Tennessee Natural Gas 3100 line. Our 3100 line already takes gas from the existing Columbia Gulf meter station. We need that new Columbia Gulf meter station there.
So you won't be building a new line to run from Columbia Gulf? I mean.
It'll, it'll run the, the, yeah, so there.
So basically, on, on this map, again, really high level, we just put a dotted line next to our existing line. And there'd be just one more dot right here.
Yeah, so that, so that, yeah, so the green, the green is Texas Eastern, just four miles to the west.
Well, is that tax that you're talking about, the two and a half million? Does that include that meter and station on Bass Road?
Yes.
You ain't got to run a line from there to tap into this one.
No, so, so the pipeline will pair, so the pipeline.
Right.
Mile post, so starting point zero will be at Bass Road there, at the Columbia Gulf.
And that will actually start.
Yes, that's where the, that's where the pipeline will start, and it'll run the 4.1 miles right to where we're talking about right now tonight.
And 114 miles later, it will be north of the, in Rome County, north of the TBA site, and then an eight mile line from there down to, off of that line, down to at another meter station.
Not a question, just a statement. I'm going to take issue with those who talk, call this prime residential property. I took, I took the liberty of looking through the planning commission agendas for the last two years. You know how many site plans, how many rezones have been filed in that, that entire area at that time? None. No, nobody's looking to develop that. And I don't see, I don't know why we, well, they're not coming to us, they're not coming to us asking, asking to do it. So unless you think Bill Gates or Jeff Bezos are planning on coming building down there, I don't, I don't know who you think's looking to build down there.
Yes, sir.
You covered everything. Tell us how safe it is. We don't, we don't know another.
So we have, we have, you saw us out there, you saw us out there on our existing pipe. That's part of our integrity program. I apologize, you guys weren't notified. We'll follow up after this meeting. But that's just one of the many things we do. Safety really begins in when we design these facilities. So one of the things you'll actually see at this compressor station are a number of things. You'll see it, it's fenced in. It's fenced in. And it, and it'll be lit at night. It will have a certain level of security. It's critical infrastructures. There will be security, around the clock security monitoring our station. That communication will feed back to our control center in Houston. We have a 24/7 control center that monitors our gas pressure, not just at our compressor stations, but in the lines of our pipe as well. In the event that we notice a drop in pressure or see something that's not regular, or say someone, where did it go and force our gate open? The compressor station has what's called an emergency shutdown. And it would immediately shut down, or could be manually shut down from, from our gas control in Houston. In addition to that, we also have little buttons by every exit, by every exit. So any employee can also blow down the station as well. When the gas is blown down, it, it, all the valves on either side of the, of the yard, of the, I'm sorry, the compressor station close. So any gas going into the station closes off, and the gas will continue down, down the line. Any gas within that loop that goes through the compressor station will go through a buffer system and is vented up into that, into the atmosphere, where it dissipates safely. Whenever we build these projects, we invite first responders and neighbors out, and we'll go, and you can see firsthand how that works. There are so many other things. Inside our stations, we have, we have obviously, you know, fire suppression units. So we don't allow flashes or cameras in our, in our units. So the slightest, any kind of spark that's noticed in our station, these fire eyes will catch it, and it'll blow down the whole station and isolate all gas. I could go on and on and on. It's a critical infrastructure facility. There are Department of Homeland Security standards we have to subscribe to. So for anyone who's looking to interfere with these operations, there's a lot of overlapping layers.
Do y'all still fly the line during the summertime?
We.
Once or twice a week?
We do fly, you may see our, we may see a patrol plane. And they fly the line, ensure that they're, the biggest threat to our pipeline is actually third-party excavation. And you said, you mentioned the magnet earlier. That's our, that's part of our public outreach. Annually, we reach out to landowners, first responders, excavators and others. But yes, we fly our line regularly. It's 14 days, every 14 days or so. And we make sure no one's digging on top of our pipe, that no one's running up our pipeline, and no one's building on top of our pipeline, not putting a pool out there, not putting, not putting a shed, or bringing a house on top of us.
Your existing easements through our properties there, are any of them increasing? Are like the size of the pipe increasing, or any of the easements getting wider? Anything like, that's, that's mine right there. That's my house, right there, that will put the driveway. You can see at the bottom of the screen.
Sure.
And your existing easement runs through those trees through my backyard right there. Yeah, they exist, yeah, that's mine.
Okay.
Is that, the easement that's back there right now, is there going to be any changes to that? If you're going to be drawing from the current line?
Yeah, so, so a member of right-of-way is not here. I try to know almost every parcel, but the majority of our easements have dual line rights. I don't know if you know if your, if your easement has dual line rights?
I don't.
Okay, so, so if it has a dual line right, so the way these were written when the original line was put in, it states that, that a future line can be put in, in the future, within that easement, so within that 50-foot easement.
Yeah, which I, I completely understand that. I just didn't know if it's, if it, is it getting bigger than that?
So, so right now, the plan is if, right now, the plan is based on the offset in the easement. So there's, there's some discrepancies in the easements that we will be ordering the landowners on. So the easement is, the easement is supposed to be such that the pipeline is 15 feet off the Sutherley line and 35 feet off the Northerly line. So we would be looking to offset this new pipe 20 feet from the existing pipe within the existing easement. However.
If it fits, right?
Yes, that would, so it would, so, yeah, so 15 going off to the, to the north, we have 35 feet. So we'd still have room in there to get the pipe in the existing easement. However, in order to come through there and get the pipe in, we may be coming to you and asking for temporary work.
Yes.
So a temporary workspace to come through there and bring equipment through and be able to trench the line properly. And then we would backfill or restore and work with you on restoration.
Okay.
And that's something that, that, that again, our right-of-way agents work with, folks on compensation for easements, for additional line rights, for temporary workspace, work with folks on restoration. You know, if anybody has, Russ has done this quite a bit as far as, you know, if there's, if, again, ag land, if there's a certain type of seed mixture, a lot of those things we, we, Russ has run into all of them. We've all run into quite a bit of them, but.
We worked that in the restoration.
Yeah, we worked that on for restoration. We've met with the, with the ag girls out here and talked at length about that already throughout the project, so.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Those summer panels, do they have a flat, it's big, it's.
So, yeah, so right now, that's, that's still something that's being, being looked at and worked out. So I can say that right now, we enter into typically 20 to 30-year agreements on our pipeline. So we would look for our assets to have at least a 50-year lifespan. The, the, I will be honest, the verdict is out on whether or not a solar panel can last 50 years or not. So there are more designs that come out every year. And, you know, we're currently working with four manufacturers in looking at new panels and new designs and new technology. So we don't have an answer, exact answer on the lifespan of the solar right now.
Are any of those companies you're looking at, are they manufactured in the United States?
So that is something that we are looking at right now is, we are looking at. So we're looking at a number of things.
Are they in the main, they're in the United States?
So, so there may be components. There are components from all around the world. And one of the things that we are taking a very close look at, and we do take very seriously in our, this is the very beginning about our company is Enbridge, is we will not work with companies that engage in, in practices that are, you know, not, not looked nicely upon throughout the world. So. So we are currently going through and vetting manufacturers that do not utilize the types of labor forces and other things that is, is not aligned with our goals and our company values.
So.
We don't know yet. So we don't know.
I, I, oh, I'm sorry.
It's just.
100%.
No, I'm sorry, so, so, so we were, so like I said, so we're, I'm sorry, we're looking at four manufacturers right now. I'm not one of the buyers. The buyers told me we're looking at four manufacturers. And again, those manufacturers do have those constraints on them. Or they will actually not, e- even if we did get them from overseas, they will not be allowed into the United States, so.
By, by the time we go into, by the time this project is actually, goes into construction, as you know, there's global, global supply chain shortages everywhere. There's tariffs that we're looking at. A lot can change between now and then, but like, like you could decide we're gonna do it like.
Yeah, and one of the things, yeah, one of the things I had, we are absolutely looking at is, as far as the 100 and, as far as the 120 miles of pipe goes, there are companies that have ramped up their steel again, which is, which is very nice to see in the United States. So we are talking right now with only domestic steel fabricators. So they would go and fracture the steel and roll the steel. And right now, we're looking at two pipeline, two companies that would do that in the US.
Okay, you said you would go and build, build this just sort of look like the barns. Don't use that barn, it's over there now as a model.
What was that?
Sorry, sir, which one is that?
You said, don't use that barn, it's over there now as a model.
Look, and that's, that's, I, I, and sir, our neighbor, I forget, I haven't known your name yet, but but you're gonna be looking at this thing, right? Let's talk. If there are things we can do.
Yeah. I more or less worry about it, I don't know. I, I care less what it looks like, as long as you got a couple of trees. And as long as it's fine enough and it ain't pissing me off in the morning, it'd be a good thing.
I don't think we will want that.
Absolutely.
I just don't like people getting on my front yard or in front of my house upsetting my dog, which is biting. And I really don't wanna get sued for somebody getting bit, and so I'd like to know if it's there.
Understood.
Yeah, and I, and I apologize that, I apologize that we, again, we didn't know that there was folks out there, so I, but again.
I know we sit down in the hole and you probably wouldn't notice this, but we still.
No, but we have out there, and you've probably seen it before, because we, we were out there, like I said, doing our due diligence, like any man do buying property. So, so that was before, that was why, when you said we're out there today, we're in. I know that we weren't out there today working, but our project.
Any questions, please, sir?
What's the plan for vegetation control around the solar array? Will you use sprays or will you use outlets?
Interesting question. So we've actually been asked to bring sheep in, now just stay out.
That's done out West.
Well, we act here experimenting though. Works really well, if that's the right circumstances. But to answer your question, we're looking at grass at this point and it'll probably be a mechanical moment. Like we do on a right of way. I know power companies tend to use herbicides, but it'll be mechanical.
Are you guys storing the solar out there, like are there giant batteries out there as well?
No, so right now, so right now, the battery storage technology, I mean, people that follow this, I'm sure, the, yeah, the battery tech. The, the battery storage technology is not there. So, you know, as we stated, the, you know, the, the design that we're putting in is, is again, it's to, it's to limit the draw from the grid as much as we can. So, you know, again, I mean, the sun's, you know, when I say eight megalots, I know, you know, you're an electrician. So when, when, when I'm talking to other electrical engineers and we're running the computer models, you know, it's based on how the sun passes across. And again, during different times of the year, sun shining longer, sun shining shorter. So there's gonna be times, there's also gonna be times when we may have one unit running and not two. So again, the plan right now is to utilize that, not store any of it. And then one of the things that we still do need to figure out, and that's something we'll be in discussion a little further with Tri County, with TBA, is looking at, should we have access, how does that go back into the grid? So in other words, that would, and that would, that would be a local workup because MBA can't take that back at a transmission grade level because what, what we're generating. So that would be, that would be a local distribution level. So we can go back to the grid. So again, so, you know, Tri County gets a new customer and the hope is, is that we can send power back.
The, the simple answer is, we anticipate that for both units to run, it's about 16. We could make eight of this, so about 40, 50% offset. So there is no chance we're normally going to store in the way it's designed. Because we wouldn't make extra, we would take, it would take more power to generate.
Yeah.
Okay, first of all, you said now most of the time, right down to the new customers, you all are building your own substation, you're using your own solar. For those of y'all that don't know, with solar, it is a TBA contract that is an interim party contract with Concelli Electric. We're getting a new customer, we're building a line, you're building a substation for your own use and your solar is for your own use. So that should be stated so that everybody understands that.
Right.
Like everybody who's in.
So.
So, you talked about the downline, I have two questions. You talked about the downline, how are you gonna downline your electric substation?
It's primarily the fence line. And keep remembering to act as, hold it with one hand. It's primarily lit around the fence line. The lighting schematic is still being planned. Typically, what's lit is where we have like access points. It's not like we have a halo all around the building. It's primarily where people need to walk, it's for lighting and security. So it's primarily focused around the doors and any walkways that we have. That's, like I said, it's lighting's still in the works, but you know it's a concern. There is a way to do this and we're gonna do it, right? It's, it's actually compliant with the dark skies program. And, you know, right now, we're still going through whether it's motion activated, whether it has to stay on. There are some things that maybe, that we just don't know all the details yet, but we're certainly working on that.
But you have to have it really for security purposes.
Not, so not at all times. So I have had that discussion with our security. So Adam brought that, Adam and I brought that back, it got back to me. And I did send lighting specifications and I did start working with our security folks on that. And as Adam just said, one of the things that they said they believe we can do is that we can do motion activated around the perimeter. So those lights wouldn't be on unless, again, somebody was trying to get in, so.
And my second question is, I mean, no way to shift the noise levels as one who said, sound low. What if they're not that low? Who determines the noise level after it's warm? And who regulates the noise level? Like if, if the neighbors hear, if you say, well, they said that you're gonna be this quiet, but it's so loud. Who, who determines that?
So, so, I'll go ahead, sir. So, as I said, we, we have to design the station for 55 LBN. And afterwards, we have to, to do noise studies after the fill line. And there's certain types of testing we do. One is for sure is full of both engines running. We have to do noise studies and do, basically, they'd be taken at the same areas where we took them before and, and prove to FERC that it's below 55. Now, notwithstanding, it's a requirement. It's not a sort of maybe it's nice type thing. It is a requirement, federal requirement, a FERC certificate. So for instance, if, if, if we're finding, you're finding that, you know, it's noisy or something, something's different, you certainly contact us and we would have to go back down and go figure it out. And we want, we have to meet that 55.
And we have done that in the past, for example, as Gus said, and I brought up camping before. So we've, I'm with the, we've gone out in the past and we have wrapped our pipe in the past in other locations and wrapped the pipe to limit that noise. So as Gus said, if we does go over that, we have to mitigate that. There's, we, there is no gray area there, we have to mitigate that, we cannot have those.
And that's part of our operations, we do that all the time. We get, we get a call, send operations out, they go to your house, they see what it sounds like, try to pin, go back to this facility and try to pinpoint what, what that noise might be coming from and we mitigate it.
Good question.
How far from Boat Dock Road is that compressor station?
I can get you, I don't have the exact footage per se. I can get you a good ass estimate, I'll follow up with you, sir.
I mean, it's gonna be visible from Boat Dock Road, you know, they.
Yeah, this, so. This view that I was just showing is from Boat Dock Road looking back towards there. And then this view is from Boat Dock Road looking, as you come around the corner, you start to see it from the other side, right? So there's, the hill slopes down, come around, you'll see this. And then by the time you go to the next site, you, you will, it starts to disappear again. So this is, the first one is up in this corner, looking back. And then the other one is from here. We did look at something over in this area as well. And by the time you get to over here, you're just seeing the front edge of it because of the way the slope.
That's a view from the road.
View from the road.
Sit back off the road.
This is a view from the road.
Yeah, and, and we're still working to improve all of this. We, you know, we still look with, with everyone and these things take time. We, if, if there is a request, we can go out to your house, take a picture from, from your front porch and, and work on a rendering for you. I mean, we could work, we're, we're here, we're here to provide information you need.
As it says, it's visualization. We, there, there is a, you know, we can get a photographer to go take an actual picture, put that as the backdrop. There's obviously gonna have to be some cut and fill to level some of this area off. So all of those things can be modeled and can be drawn better than this. As Ryan already said, we're at 30% drawing. This is what we have right now and this is our best guess for where we're at right now. If you want more, better visualization, it's gonna take us another few months to get to that point where we have a better design and, you know, a better drawing.
Let's have about three more questions and then unless there's one that's really pressing, we're gonna shut the meeting down, I think.
So it's, I mean, this current property obviously is zoned A1 right now. Y'all do constitute as a utility, correct? And though it's private. So it doesn't have to be rezoned for the property to, this project to go on that property. So with that being said, it looks like what you're doing is already the buffering that we have in place for commercial, abiding, a residential or agricultural anyway. So if, if y'all are already planning on doing that, agreeing to abide by those standards, I think would help a lot with the residents around there because you would just be following what any other commercial property would be doing also.
And our plan is to engage with planning and zoning and, and run our plan to eye and see how we can further refine and improve. This is just an idea for this meeting. We wanted to come with commissioners and any other members of landowners and others who may be around us who are interested right now. You know, again, we're not gonna break ground at the earliest until sometime late 2025.
If you even break ground, yeah.
If we even break ground. But, but that's definitely a part of the next step to further refine and make sure we're doing whatever we can to.
Yeah, I, I.
So I did wanna say, yes, we are a utility and yes, we get A1 and we do, so we do meet that. However, for the solar array, we will be going over the percentage land used.
As an accessory?
As an accessory.
Okay.
So we would be coming for a special use or a variance for that. And then ultimately, we do need a building permit for the solar array. So planning, zoning and then the building permit. So, yes, we, we do have the A1, but because we exceeded that percentage on the property, we do need that variance.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Go ahead.
As basis of comparison, is there another location in the United States that uses solar to power a compressor station?
Yes.
Where would that be?
We have a facility up in, we have one in New Jersey, I think we're rounding out construction.
Lambertville is, it's already done, been constructed for about a couple of years now. And Heidler'sburg in Pennsylvania. Are we doing that?
We have pictures on our enbridge.com, we do, people sell solar power. It's, it simply looks like, simply, what's some, very similar work we're showing, there's some areas where you can open property around, around where we have electric and compressor stations we have.
What is their proximity to the center of the town they're in?
So actually, actually Lambertville, I worked on in New Jersey. Lambertville is actually has residences, has apartments, has a number of, a number of dwellings and, and other appearances around the entire facility. So tree screening was, was a big deal there. And again, those were, those were actually gas turbines that were replaced with electric motor drives for noise and air quality and then solar was added as well, so. So it's not just in the middle of nowhere.
I was wondering if there's been any type of studies done with solar panels. Does it heat up the land or have you had any problems of temperature changing in a neighborhood because of that?
No, we haven't, I mean, we haven't seen that. You know, certainly, there's been, there's, there's some things out there on very large solar arrays and folks have think, very, very large facilities that, you know, folks have seen things with birds and then that's been with wind as well and some of the places out west. But the, the, the scale of what we're doing is so small. Again, it's, this area of Tennessee is certainly not, you know, the desert out in Monmouth, out in Southern Nevada or somewhere else like that.
Is built in one in Tompkinsville, solar farm in the third.
Oh, Tompkinsville.
Yes, Art, we're, we're looking.
Yeah, so, yeah, we are looking at, at putting, so wherever we can. Tompkinsville is one of the next solar locations that we're looking at, up in Kentucky.
They've not started that project?
They have not started that project yet. And another one further up in Heidler'sburg.
Tompkinsville's an existing compressor station.
Yeah.
That's, that's been there, but as Art mentioned, yeah, solar has not started yet, but that is being looked at.
And the, the reason why we wouldn't have solar at our other compressor stations on East Tennessee is their gas grid. There's no benefit to putting solar for those areas.
Any other questions? I would just say, I appreciate tonight, I really, this is a great opportunity to get in front of, you know, community leaders and landowners and, and hear some direct feedback. I don't want the conversation to stop there. We are committed to continuing to provide updates. Anytime you have a major inflection point, we will make sure that you are aware. We also have bridge line at enbridge.com. We have a website that will keep updated, it's enbridge.com/bridge line. If you weren't able to attend any of the open houses, there's a virtual open house where you can go in and walk through a virtual room. Here's also our, our phone numbers, I encourage you to use them. I, I'll say, just based on experience, as you guys all know, you can go out there on Google, start Googling your own questions and find about any answer you want. Our, our facilities are not the same facilities they build in Russia or even South Texas. These are very specific facilities designed for, to meet the exact needs of Tennessee. And should you have any questions, should you hear any rumors, let's have an ongoing dialogue. My number's right here, Art's number's right here. If you're a landowner, please call this number and they will direct you directly to your, an agent who represents your area. But I, I'll just say, let's keep good information out there. And, and should you have any questions, please reach out, but we will be back in touch with you all. We'll be following up on some of the questions today. And maybe, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, maybe we could provide a response to you and you can provide an update at the next meeting.
But, yes, one more question. Net up right now, this side, the right-hand side is the only option for Trail to County, right now, you know?
Not that we're aware of, sir.
No, there is not.
Let me thank everyone, especially members of the public who came tonight to discuss.
Uh, meaning a hundred twenty acres, flat land with willing landowner. Um, if anyone knows of other options, this is an ongoing evaluation, please raise them to, to us for awareness. Um, but this is currently our preferred site, and, um, it's currently what we filed as our preferred site out of those alternatives.
But there's not another option in Trail County right now, do you know what?
Not that we're aware of, sir.
No, there is not.
Let me thank everyone, especially members of the public who came tonight, the discussion's been lively, I appreciate your sense of humor. Uh, uh, it's always good to get together and exchange information, and I think it's been very informative, and I thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.